Thank you again. Now we will move into our regular city council meeting on Tuesday, June 3rd. Vice Mayor's Laugh Em'Em'x, I love to bang the gavel, so much fun.
(laughing).
So with that, we'll move right into a call to order. We're going to have an invocation first offered by Pastor, excuse me, Pastor Jamin Oliver from Jehovah Shema Apostolic Faith Church, after which we will say the Pledge of Allegiance. I will lead that, and if you'd all rise please. Pastor Anderson Oliver. Amen. Thank you. Please follow me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, may be seated. Thank you Pastor Oliver. We'll move into the roll call, please.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Chapados.
Here.
Councilmember Frank.
Here.
Councilwoman Gussie.
Still here.
Councilmember Kimball.
Here.
Vice Mayor Farrell.
Here.
Mayor Price.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Great, thank you. At this time we have no proclamations, acknowledgements, awards, that'll take us right to item four, the report from the mayor. First off, we'd like to welcome Councilmember Dan Frank. We'd like to welcome him to the council today. We're baptizing him by fire apparently, and lots of stuff going on, so please give him a round of applause. Thank you for being here.[228.81][228.81](applause). Thank you for your willingness to serve. At this time, I wanted to just touch base on a few items. This past weekend was the American Legion baseball that started back up, and the AkChin Chairman, as well as myself and Councilwoman Gussie and a variety of others were able to attend. Also, I believe it was the head person of the Veterans Affairs in the state was there as well, and so it was a wonderful time had by all, and we certainly appreciate our neighbors for participating. Also, had the opportunity to attend an event in which the Rotary Interact was able to conduct a chartering event. This is something that had not been done here in the city before, and it's their first time, and once it's done, it's something that's rather historic, so many congratulations to the Rotary Club and to their coordination with MUSD and the high school. Also had the opportunity to speak at a Valley Partnership meeting. This was a really interesting opportunity. Had the opportunity to speak to about 300 business leaders, CEOs, others that would perhaps not regularly be interested in the city of Maricopa, and we had probably 15, 20 minutes dedicated to talk just about the city and about our needs and the desires of what we're trying to accomplish here, and really get, sell a different perspective than perhaps what they're used to. And it was funny, I made the joke that I hear all the time, which is, "Oh yeah, I used to go dove hunting out there," and you saw all the heads in the audience, about 300 people nod, and so it was a really interesting opportunity to be able to say, "Hey, you really need to come out here and see what we're doing," and it's something very different than perhaps what you remember. So that was a wonderful opportunity to promote our city. Councilwoman Gussie had asked me for a minute to make a remark regarding the Let's Move program, so I turn the time over to her.
We're gonna free-kick the Let's Move program, and we do have some guests that'll be talking at the Call to the Public, but it's exciting to get this move, this program going again. The Let's Move program is an initiative that First Lady Obama had started a few years back, and we brought it to the city a couple of years ago. This is our fourth year doing the Let's Move program. It used to be ran by a couple of different organizations, but we're taking it back, and the program is ran 100% by volunteers. So it's excellent to provide this, this program to the kids, give them an opportunity to get off that sofa, get off the, playing the computer games or whatever it is that they're doing inside their house, and get out there and do some exercises. We're gonna run it Monday through Thursday for an hour, and I'll give that opportunity to our guests to speak on it when they, when we get the chance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the last update was, I don't know if many of you experienced this today, we had a power outage from ED3 today. Many of you perhaps were wondering what happened. Apparently there was a dead bird, or a bird that flew into the pole and the 69,000 volt line, so obviously that created a bit of an issue, and so that, that line was down from about 11:37 and was restored at 12:35. We thank ED3 for getting us that information, so we can pass it along to you. We knew that there were about 1,300 meters in the city affected, so if you were one of those, we apologize for that. Okay, that concludes the Mayor's Minute, and we'll move on to the report from the City Manager.
Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, we advertise for the Community Services Director position, seeking significant education, experience, and certifications. We received 86 applications. We held a Skype session with the eight most qualified candidates and focused on their technical skills. The review process included the directors from the public safety departments, Human Resources Interim Director, and the interim Community Services Director, and also the Chairman of the Parks Recreation and Libraries Committee. The field was narrowed to the top two highly qualified candidates. I and the interim HR Director, Rick Clor, met with the two top candidates and focused more so on the values that they shared, the fit between the community with the city council, with the executive team, and with their department. I am very pleased tonight to introduce to you the new Community Services Director, Ms. Kristy Reister.[489.03][489.03](applause).
Honorable Mayor and Council, thank you so much. Thank you for the introduction, Mr. Rose. I'm really excited to be here and just diving right in. Lots of really great things happening and just trying to evaluate where we are and how to move us forward. So the staff is phenomenal, and I am so blessed. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
And where do you live now?
We're living in Maricopa. We're here in town, yeah.[524.16][524.16](applause). Yeah, yeah. We love it, we love it, so we're having a great time.
Thank you.
And I also understand that Kristy's a wildcat?
I am, I am.[535.41][535.41](laughing). I am, I am.
Well, wonderful.
Thank you.
And you are certainly the most qualified candidate, the best fit, I think, for the community, and I am very pleased and honored that, that you're now working for the city of Maricopa.
Thank you, I am as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your Honor, I believe that you have an employee to introduce yourself.
I do, I do. Our marketing and special event coordinator, Naisha Whitman, she previously worked in higher education as an activity advisor at Arizona State University. In her role, she was responsible for leadership development, both small and large scale programming, and had budget oversight. Additionally, Naisha has prior community service experience, working for the city of Reno, sorry, as an enrichment program supervisor coordinating recreational and community programs. Naisha has received a Masters of Arts in Educational Leadership with an emphasis in higher education administration from the University of Nevada Reno, and I don't know, there she is. If she would like to come up and say a few words?[608.04][608.04](applause).
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to be here tonight. Hello, everyone. I'm just gonna take a few moments to honor and recognize our sponsors for the Salsa Festival. So with that, I'm going to thank the following companies for their support. We had State Farm Insurance, who were a some barrel sponsor. We had Perfect Pond and Jewelry, who were a freehand tray sponsor. Native New Yorker, Pat Keeney, he's actually here. Do you like to come up?[655.82][655.82](applause). We also had Orbitel Communications, who was the communication sponsor for the event. Frito Lay was the salsa competition sponsor, and we also have Scott Barto here in attendance, and he was the presenting sponsor for the event.[677.12][677.12](applause). So sponsors are an invaluable part to the Salsa Festival, so on behalf of the city of Maricopa, we'd like to thank you for your support in helping to ensure our events are a success. Thank you.[698.12][698.12](applause).
Mayor, no additional items to report.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. At this time, we'll move to the Call to the Public. This is your opportunity to rise to speak to your council. As you know, we ask you to keep your...
Mayor, if I could interrupt, there is one other announcement regarding the Let's Move program, I'm told.
I'd like to introduce Rocky Brown, our youth coordinator, who's going to be presenting this next item, and, you know, he worked really hard to achieve the Playful City USA for us again this year. I know last year there were a lot of groups that came together to work on achieving that for our city, and through all the hustle and bustle of, of getting the Copper Sky opened and staff being just bombarded with things, he, he found a way to go ahead and resubmit that application, and we, we have received that designation again for our city this year, so I'm gonna let him come up.[768.32][768.32](applause).
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Like our new director said, for the second year in a row, Maricopa has been honored as a Playful City USA. We're one of 12 in the state of Arizona, and I'll just kind of briefly explain to you guys what that is. All right, Playful City USA, it's presented by the Kaboom Foundation. It's a nonprofit of having a vision of a place to play for every children within walking distance in America. They recognize communities that support play, and they aim to create a network of innovation, innovative recreation programs. The initial process last year, we did, had to do an audit of all our current parks and wrecks within the city, and we were assisted by our PRL committee and also members of our youth council. They had the task of going out and mapping every location of the exact park locations that were then uploaded to a file in the national database, then placed all of our parks on that file. We also had an application. We garnered letters of support from our elected officials and also members of our PRL, and we had to take lots of pictures of people at play to really show them what our community's about. This year, we had to go through a re-application process, and one of the favorite parts of doing that for me was we got to update the Copper Sky Recreation Complex. Got to add all the new amenities we have at the park, the new fields, the new playgrounds, and we also outlined all the new programming that we can now do, that we have this wonderful space. And also, we had even more pictures of people at play we could add to the application. The benefits of being a playful city, we get national recognition. We are also eligible for specific grants that only the cities that have been chosen are, can apply for. We can get community notoriety, and we also have those Playful City signs that we have up right now at Copper Sky next to our playground facilities. So with that, you'll notice by your chairs, one thing Kaboom really likes to see is our elected officials actually taking part in play, so if we could get a picture of you guys at play, I can send it into them and just prove how playful Maricopa is.[903.12][903.12](laughing).
This is a productive meeting.[915.32][915.32](laughing).
Don't we have ushers or something that can come and take these away like they do at Diamondback Games?[921.51][921.51](laughing). Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, other than the confetti coming down later, I think we're finished.[933.32][933.32](laughing).
I just want to know if you climbed up there yourself and put it up there.[938.12][938.12](laughing). All right, thank you very much, we appreciate it. Always good to have a little levity. Moving on to the Call to the Public, this is the opportunity for you to approach the council. Please keep your comments to under three minutes. We have a timer up there for your assistance, and this is your opportunity to address the council, but just be aware that the council typically does not respond as this is not agendized. So, Mr. Lee Phylis.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, general public, welcome. As Councilwoman Gussie mentioned, we will be starting the Let's Move program next week, June 9th. It will run for six weeks through July 17th, Monday through Thursday, each night from 6:00 to 7:00 PM over at the Copper Sky Recreation Facility. There is a great opportunity for children ages 5 to 16 to come out and experience a wide variety of activities and fitness and, and health. Just want to make sure that we're encouraging a good, healthy lifestyle. On this Thursday, June 5th, from 6:00 to 7:00 PM at the Copper Sky Recreation Room, we will have a kickoff party. The public is welcome to come in and meet with some of the providers and get a little bit more information about the classes that are going to be offered, and all the sporting activities. So we'd like to invite everybody to come out. That's this Thursday, June 5th, from 6:00 to 7:00 PM, and then, starting on Monday, each night for, Monday through Thursday for six weeks, enjoy the program. It is free to the public and run by volunteers. ATA Martial Arts is proud to be one of the providers, and there are a lot of great coaches and providers that are going to be participating in this, so welcome to come on out. If you have any questions, you can email to Councilwoman Gussie or myself. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, thank you for letting us speak. I wanted to touch base on a couple of things, I think, of interest to, to you all relative to the Maricopa Center for Entrepreneurship. Couple of things have happened. We've had a change in NACET management. NACET is the organization with whom you contracted management services. The CEO of NACET, Russ Yelton, has resigned and is now going to be the CEO of a prominent tissue bank, if you will, growing technology firm. However, I would like to let you know that Russ has committed to remain active in MCE by being a member of our advisory board, with the potential, as we grow, of becoming a member of our Board of Directors. We will not lose his influence, so just to let you know. At the same, now, along the same lines, I'd like to introduce to you briefly the new acting CEO of NACET, Annette Zinke. Annette, if you will stand. Annette is at your service.[1129.66][1129.66](applause). Annette, Annette and I are both at your service, so any questions, please let us know. There will be no change or ripple in, in the management as, as we go forward. I'd also like to, to let you all know, of course, I think you've heard any number of times about our, our 3D printer contest. Thank you, Councilwoman Chapados, for being a judge on that. I would like to let you know that MCE has offered and has awarded two internships to two of our high school students, and they are starting for this, they have started this Monday for the summer. Their task for this summer is to put together a presentation and a workshop on how to build your own 3D printer. We will have participants in this workshop leave owning their own 3D printer and knowing how it operates from software to design. It's, it's pretty exciting. I would also like to know that I have, I've shared that, that concept with other incubators, and I have had a request from the incubator in surprise to present the same workshop to their community as soon as we have finished it here. So we are having an impact, not just here in Maricopa. People are beginning to recognize us. Oh my gosh, my iPad went off.[1223.23][1223.23](laughing). Next on the list, I do have a client with me. Candy Obnovi is, is one of my, one of our clients. He is the, the CEO and owner of Catalog Inc. He'd love to speak for just a moment. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman, Councilwoman, thank you for your time for allowing me to speak. As Tom alluded to, I'm a client at MCE. MCE has been instrumental in our growth and our ability to nurture our business. Starting, we started our business in quarter three of 2012, and we've seen growth at almost 100% on a quarter-by-quarter basis. They've been, they were instrumental, helped us lay the groundwork as to how to run a business. Most of my business colleagues that I know, my friends, know their business but not how to run a business. MCE has helped us in regards to laying the groundwork to, from accounting to consulting, strategizing, how to build a business from ground up and be successful. So we're truly thankful for that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Call the public this time. Okay? Mr. Wade.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Henry Wade, and I am a candidate for a city council for the city of Maricopa. And I stand before you for the purpose of one thing and one thing only. In a previous contest, an election contest, myself and my, my opponent, if you will, vowed to keep a positive campaign, to operate in a positive manner, to stay on the issues, to stay on the topics, to be respectful of one another, and to be respectful of the city that we want to represent. And in this particular case, the county that we wanted to represent. I would like to issue a challenge to everyone who's going forward to run for city council here in the city of Maricopa, to take that same challenge, to take that same positive approach. We've been asked to do different things. I'm asking everybody to maintain a positive attitude, to represent themselves, and to represent the city that is important to us. The city is looking for leadership. The city is looking for positive leadership. We have individuals who can provide that. Everyone is here. I think I was given a question in a, a survey monkey question, and it asked me, "What did I think set me apart from the other candidates?" My response was not a whole lot. We were all called to serve. We all come forward to serve. I come to issue this challenge, this pledge, that I will do that, and I'm hopeful and prayerful that my fellow candidates will do exactly the same thing throughout the process, whether it be city council or any other campaigns that are, will be running here in the city of Maricopa, the county of Penal, the state of Arizona. Thank you very much for your time, and I hope that challenge will be taken.
Thank you, Mr. Wade.[1417.32][1417.32](applause). Anyone else? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the Call to the Public and move on to the minutes. We have minutes 7.1 and 7.2 for approval. Can I have a motion to approve, please? A motion is our second?
Second.
And a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. No public hearings on tonight's agenda, moves us to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve consent, please?
Still mode?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Moves us on to the regular agenda, item 10.1. This is the mayor and city council shall discuss and possibly take action on an approval of the Special Summer Shuttle Pilot Program. Along with changes to the Comet policy, modifying minimum age of passengers, and reducing fare rates, this pilot program will operate from June 9th to August 1st of this year. This is for discussion and action. Proceed.
Good evening, Mayor Price, councilmembers, and welcome, Councilmember Frank, to the council. I appreciate the opportunity to talk again about our Comet program, and tonight specifically, we're requesting approval for three things, those being approval for the Special Summer Shuttle Pilot Program, to change the fare to free during this pilot program during this promotional period, and the third thing we're requesting is to change the minimum age at which a child can ride without accompaniment. I'd like to give you just a brief background. As, as I explained a couple of months ago, we do have some vast distances between some residential neighborhoods and our Copper Sky facility. In addition to that, SR347 primarily is not very pedestrian friendly in that it's got incomplete sidewalk infrastructure, and we've got slope and shoulders in some places on both sides of the, the road. It's not a very pedestrian friendly environment, particularly for children or for seniors trying to find their way to the Copper Sky facility. So with that backdrop, we are pleased to offer the Comet Special Summer Shuttle, and I would like to point out right up front that we are not requesting any additional funding, either from grant or from general fund for this program. We intend to operate completely out of existing budget. Our proposed period is from June 9th to August 1st of this year, and the service days would be Monday through Friday from 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM. And in cooperation with Maricopa Unified School District, we have obtained permission and coordination to use schools throughout the city as bus stops. And the primary reason for using the schools as bus stops is because they're pretty much scattered through the city, and the residents are already familiar with their locations, so they're easy for them to find. Those schools include Desert Winds, Santa Cruz, Santa Rosa, Pima Butte, Saddleback, Butterfield, Maricopa Wells, and Maricopa Elementary. We've already coordinated with these schools to make sure there's no interference with their summer school programs, and that they are offered in different hours, and so we'll be able to use the bus stops right on their, right on their sites. We'll also offer bus stops at our own Maricopa Park and Ride, and potentially at the AkChin Community Library. The Tribal Council, AkChin Tribal Council is meeting tomorrow night, and they're going to consider and hopefully approve the bus stop in their location, and we're very proud to be able, be able to offer that good community service to them. The bus will cycle, the intention is for the bus to cycle throughout that four-hour period, three minutes at each stop. The industry standard is only one minute, but primarily our ridership, we anticipate being children, so we're allowing three minutes at each bus stop. And the Summer Shuttle is offered in addition to the current demand response that we have. We are not proposing any changes to the existing demand response. We have a population that is completely dependent on that service, so there are no proposed changes to that service. I would like to go into a little bit more detail about the minimum age requirement. Current policy is that age 14 and under do require a responsible person, and the responsible person is not, it's not identified by age, but our existing policy simply identifies it as a responsible person for, for children 14 and under. The mat, the primarily, excuse me, the primary underlying reason is presumably because with the demand response, they can visit any location inside of Maricopa or Chandler or even Casa Grande, and so as you can imagine, there's somewhat greater risk that children could get to places that they're not supposed to be. With the Summer Shuttle, on the other hand, we've got a very specific destination, which is Copper Sky, so the bus will be cycling only between the bus stops and the Copper Sky. We feel that this is a much less risk to the children getting to places that they shouldn't be visiting. And last thing for the requested age change is that it is consistent with the minimum age for the Copper Sky Aquatic Center. The minimum age that we're asking for the change to be only for this Special Summer Shuttle is to age nine, which is the minimum age for the Aquatic Center today. We are not requesting any change to any minimum age ridership on the demand response, again because the demand response can, can visit a greater variety of locations. If I could talk briefly about the fare change that we are requesting, we are requesting that the fare be reduced to free, and this is because it is a promotional service, it's a pilot program, and this is on ADOT's recommendation that we offer free service for a limited period of time with the real intention, in addition to serving the community, but to build the ridership up to a point that we, we feel that we can measure the demand. Now, some things that we're, we feel that we're gonna have to watch for during this program is... program is, potential is there. We don't know how popular this, this program may or may not be, but there's some potential the bus may fill up at maybe the first stop or at the second stop. We intend to treat it on a first-come, first-served basis. There's some possibility that exists that we might have to limit each, each location to perhaps three to five riders if we see the demand is that great, instead of, you know, filling the bus in the first one or two stops and then the rest of the community is left without. There is some element of uncertainty with this. Of course, it's a pilot program and to some degree, we're just going to have to wait and see how well it works out and modify our procedures as we go through the program. Another consideration that, that we're dwelling on is we want to be careful that we don't leave any children behind at last call at the Copper Sky facility. I think it'd be quite scary to a child to come out and find the buses already departed. So, we found out that they do have a PA system at the Aquatic Center and we intend to have an announcement made, just like at the bar, last call, except in this case for the Special Summer Shuttle, last call for the bus. And hopefully, everybody hears it and they get back on the bus like they're supposed to. And we think the bus will cycle. We're going to be running two routes with one bus and from my estimate, it looks like each of the two routes will take about an hour apiece and it pretty well canvases the entire community. If council approves tonight, we've got coordination in advance to advertise on Facebook, Twitter, city website, inmaricopa.com, The Monitor, government channel, weekly email newsletter, and we're sending out at least two electronic boards with council's approval, probably tomorrow, and those message boards will state, Copper Sky, Free Shuttle, Second Line, Details on City Website. And that's about all I have to talk about with the program, so I'm wide open to questions.
Counsel, any questions on the item? Yes, we'll start with Councilwoman Chapados and move to Councilman Frank.
(inaudible) I just want to mention that I understand perfectly, because of reducing the age of riders to nine, maybe that qualifies as a responsible person to be able to take kids that age and young along, I'm a lot different. All the kids have to be at least nine and arrive at five o'clock.
That's correct. The minimum age is, is requested to be changed to nine, but it would still, below age nine would still require a responsible adult to accompany those below age nine, eight and below.
And my other question is, if somebody does wait until last call for last ride and they may have missed the bus that goes to their room, can you make arrangements to make sure that every time the bus gets to where the drop-off point originated from?
Yes, we will not leave any, any child, no child, no child left behind.[1223.08][1223.08](laughing) And that, that would operate with a simple call from the Aquatic Center to our, the dispatch at Total Transit, our contract provider, and they're in radio contact with, with the driver. And so, that's fairly easily remedied.
What kind of accommodations are you making, whether it's for bike, bicycle, skateboards, the white Copper Sky, and then you want to be skateboarding and so on?
Great question, council member. And Mayor Price, Councilwoman Chapados, the buses have a bicycle rack on the front and previous policy did specify that no skateboards were allowed on the buses. However, there's a skateboard facility at Copper Sky and so my instructions to the drivers and through Total Transit would be to allow skateboards as long as they're not riding them up and down in the aisle in the bus. So...
Councilman Frank?
Yes, the no child left behind was my question as well.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Farrell?
Just a quick comment on, on the final call at the Aquatic Center. It, it's going to work out nice and if you've been there and partaked in the, in the, in the Aquatic Center itself. They take a 10-minute break every hour and it pools all the kids out of the pool for 10 minutes. And I've heard this intercom system. It's a very clear, nice, loud intercom system, so you're not going to have any problem with people hearing it. I don't think we'll see a problem with this last call.
Mayor Price, Councilman Farrell, thank you for that comment. That's reassuring.
Hey, I have a follow-on on both those questions though, and I think that's what kind of where Councilwoman Chapados was alluding to. What happens when someone rides, you know, from, to the, the bus, gets there to the Aquatic Center and the Aquatic Center has a PA system, but the skate park does not. It's at the other end. So, to what extent is there, I mean, of course, you know, there's a, they're responsible for themselves, but, but the reality is these are, could be nine-year-old children or 10-year-old children, 11, 12, and if they're over there having fun, they lose track of time. I mean, how, is there, is there somebody that will go down there every so often for, for a last call as well from Copper Sky? I hate to put too much burden on them, but, you know, in order to coordinate, how, how is that going to work?
Mayor Price, council members, I don't have an answer to that question. We're going to have to work out that detail with the community services staff, but we, we can work it out fairly easily.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
Do the buses have an intercom system?
They do not and they really don't need an intercom system, I don't believe.
Do they have a horn?
Certainly.[1374.26][1374.26](laughing)
There you go. Any other questions? Yes, Councilwoman Chapados.
(inaudible).
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, on to 10.2. Thank you very much. Going to discuss and possibly take action to approve the proposed 10-year capital improvement plan, or CIP plan. This is for discussion and action. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. The item in front of you is the 10-year CIP plan. We started this process back in October, November of last year. The city manager reviewed in January and then the BFO reviewed it extensively in the end of January. And then it was presented to council at a work session in the middle of May. With that, a couple of the highlights is that with the, the plan has a total of 98 projects that equal out to $188 million for the whole 10 years. 56 of those projects are for 14, 15 budget year. It's about $88 million. And with that, it's excluding grant-funded, it's $32 million in, in funding from the city itself. The major sources for the, the plan and for the, the budget are the general government CIP funds, which is the 50% of the construction sales tax that the city receives. Also is the county half-cent road tax that the city receives, the development impact fee funds, and also the highway user revenue funds. Those are the, the major sources that fund the CIP projects. The, out of the $88 million, there is about $76 million of that is public works. That is all the streets, but also with that is the SR 347 overpass project. The, we are in the process of grant-funding that with $52 million, so $11 million of that is actually city funding, cash funding that will come out of the city's budget for that overpass. The major, the other major portions of the funding is also the, some of the projects is the Public Works Maintenance and Fire Administration or the Fire Fleet Facility, but then also the, the substation. Both of those combined are about $10 million coming out of the, of the projects. Some of the other accomplishments that we're looking to, to go forward with is also maintaining the streets, the, the street maintenance programs that are, that are going on. I know we, we go out there every week or every other week just to look at the streets, Public Works does, but maintaining our, our streets is part of the projects. With that, are there any questions?
Questions, counsel. I just wanted to kind of quickly just summarize in the fact, I mean, again, we've been through this for the last six months and going over and over and over it as it pertained to the budget. But, you know, the CIP is one of those living documents. It is constantly evolving. It's constantly changing. We approve this every year. You literally have short-term, you know, or near-term, short-term, intermediate-term, long-term goals in this plan. You have budgets for things that there's no money for theoretically that might come in later, i.e. the 347, you know, $80 million if grants come through because you have to budget for that now, but you can't spend something you haven't budgeted for. So, I just wanted to, to clarify that this is a, this is an ever-evolving plan. It's, it's got monies into it that, you know, may be a placeholder if, if anything, but, but each year as you go through a strategic plan as a council, as needs change, as revenues change, as, you know, the need in the city changes, that constantly evolves. Is that correct?
Yes, Mayor, that is correct. We go through this process every year and the, the budget for fiscal year 14, 15, we do budget for grants and that is because if you don't budget for the appropriation, you are not able to spend the money. So, that's where we look to see, okay, which projects will we be doing? How much will it be? And be able to appropriate those funds for those projects in case the money comes in for grants or any other revenues that come in. We have the authority to be able to spend for that project.
Perfect. Okay. Any other questions or concerns on this item, counsel? If not, can we have a motion? Anyone?[1656.61][1656.61](laughing) So, we have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Alright, on to 10.3. We're going to discuss and possibly take action on accepting the resignation of Judge Scott Sully, the presiding judge for the position of Maricopa Municipal Court. This is pretty straightforward. Dennis?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Judge Sully is currently under a contract that ends at the end of this year in December 2014. He submitted a resignation effective May 31st, 2014, and so this would, if, if council accepts it, would create an opening in the presiding judge position.
Okay. Any questions on this item? Is there a motion to accept?
Move to, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion and a second.
Mayor, I wish to abstain from this vote.
Yes, discussion. We have an abstention. So, we have a motion and a second and one abstention. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. One abstention. Thank you very much. Onto item 10.4. The council discussed possibly take action on selecting a method by which to fill the presiding judge position for the Maricopa Municipal Court as it pertains to the last item. Vice Mayor Farrell?
Mayor, I move that we table this particular item.
Okay, we have a motion to table. Further discussion? I think the discussion is, is that we want to go see, we want more information in order to make this decision. And in order to do that, I think we need to find out more from the judge pro temps and, you know, just talk with Penal County to make sure agreements are in place so that we can make a fully educated decision. Am I correct in that? Okay. With, with that, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Yes.
Just for the record, I did recuse myself from executive session 14-16 as it pertains to this and I will recuse myself from this.
Thank you very much. So, recusal. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. That concludes our agenda for tonight. Thank you very much for being here. We appreciate it. And with that, can I have a motion to move to E session, please? Have a motion, is there a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We're adjourned. Thank you.